Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I think Mr. Labanze and Mr. Reyes are not able to attend, but...
Reyes? Did I get the wrong councilman?
Okay. So with that, we'll go to item two. I believe DOT has to get to another meeting, so...
Item number two continues from May 30th, 2012, August 7th, 2012, and June 18th, 2013. L.A. DOT to report response to motion, Alarcon Englander, relative to at-grade road crossing and safety measures and plans for said safety measures. This item has also been referred to the Transportation Committee.
Great. DOT? There's Brian.
Brian Gallagher, Senior Transportation Engineer, Department of Transportation. The latest status of this project is that at 12 locations, we're still finalizing putting in horse crossing pavement markings on the roadway and horse crossing warning signs on the side of the roadway. At 50 locations, we've completed putting in share the road and equestrian warning signs. And we haven't yet done the crosswalk work up by the California Polo Club, but that's coming up soon. And we have three locations where we're installing rectangular rapid-flash beacons with advanced LED illuminated warning signs. These three locations will be able to be activated by a regular push button as well as by an equestrian push button that's located six feet off of the ground. At Wheatland and Wentworth, we are installing the equipment pole...
For the rider to push.
Pardon?
For the rider to push.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to get Brian to smile.
Okay. Well, it worked. At Wheatland and Wentworth, we're installing equipment poles and flashers this Friday. We still have a few items that are remaining before we're able to actually turn it on and put it into operation, but we're hoping that we can get everything turned on on Tuesday, July 2nd. I know it's not...
June 30th.
It's not June 30th, but we have to make sure that it's safe to everybody, and if that's something we need to bring everybody together for ceremony after it's operating, we'll make sure to do outreach so that everybody can participate. We know that you've spent a lot of effort and time spearheading this whole project on behalf of the community, and we definitely want to have you involved because...
Well, I don't want to push the button and push the pole down at the same time.
That's correct.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen.
At Marybell and Wentworth and Christie and Foothill, those ones should be completed in the next two to three weeks.
Great.
I'm sure that the people that live in the area that are riding the horses there have seen our crews out there hard at work. Sometimes they're even out there on the weekends and at night.
They gave two thumbs up out there.
And we are also trying to provide street lighting as part of this project. That wasn't identified as an initial improvement at these three locations, but after going out there and seeing that all we have there right now is the DWP, utilitarian lighting, we just felt like we had to upgrade the lighting to make it safer for people that are crossing there in the dark.
Great.
We are also going to do a motion to reappropriate any unused funding that we have received to do this work this fiscal year so that the money that is not spent this year will be re-appropriated to the same project for next year. And when the whole project is finished, whatever funding is remaining, we'll work with the new council office and the community to either identify additional projects or to transfer back to the original funding source.
Great. Great. Well, Brian, I want to thank you personally for your focus on this effort and your effort and creativity to find different ways to get things accomplished that we didn't necessarily think of but that this community sorely needs. And, you know, I can't say enough for how dedicated you've been to this project. I really appreciate it. Even I remember when you came back the first time, and I wasn't sure what you were going to report back, if I was going to get the stall or whatever, and you came in with all these recommendations and really blew me away, and we've actually made it happen. So I can't say enough for you. I think the community greatly appreciates you. In all my 20 years, I will remember you as a famous city employee who cares deeply for the community. But in all seriousness, I thank you, and if you want me to write a letter to your bosses, I'd be happy to do that, and I'm still trying to get him to smile, but I'm having a hard time. But he's a dedicated city employee.
Thank you for the kind words.
Okay. Do we have any public comment cards on this?
No public comment cards.
No, but Gibson has got two thumbs up for you and, you know...
I would just like to say thank you. Brian's been awesome. Keep him in the loop.
Yeah. Yeah. Dale Gibson, for those of you in radio land, was just saying how awesome Brian is, and, you know, the community really appreciates... And I get comments, by the way, from horse owners that I bump into at various events, and they'll just say, "Thank you so much for this sign," or "this light," or whatever. It really... It couldn't have happened without your passionate support, and so we owe you a debt gradually. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Also, if things don't work out perfectly when everything is installed, we are going to go back and look at it and do whatever it takes as far as fine-tuning to make sure that it works the best we can make it work.
Great. Thank you again. Okay. Item number one.
Item number one continues from May 30th, 2012, August 7th, 2012, and June 18th, 2013. Motion, Alarcon Englander, relative to instructing the Department of Building and Safety with input from the Los Angeles Equine Advisory Committee to report on recommendations on establishing and expedite a structural plan check review and approval process for the installation use of barns, housing horses. Also refer to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
Okay. So we have building and safety and planning? Or who wants to come up?
Three of us.
Okay. So how are we doing? Are we... Have we made any progress in the last few days?
Yes, we have done. So hopefully we'll be able to make you smile instead of you make us smile.
You already did. Take one of these. Here.
So now, for equine-keeping structures, we always have two part of the... There are two issues with the equine-keeping structure. One is building code requirements; other one is zoning code requirements. I can address building code requirements. Luckily, we are in the process of adopting the new California Building Code as of January 1st, 2014. So we are proposing to amend our code that any structure of 220 square foot in area and maximum 12 feet in height can be exempt from the structural requirements as long as they don't have any plumbing and electricity within that structure. So that will satisfy, I think, most of the equine-keeping structures.
Okay. Which would mean... What would they do? They... How do they get the exemption?
Oh, as long as they... I mean, building permit will be required; it's just the exemption from structural regulations requirement. Because we still have to verify the setbacks from the property lines, setbacks from the neighbors' houses and all that stuff. So all they have to bring it to us, the site plan, which shows where they are proposing equine enclosure or equine-keeping structure. And if they meet the 120-square-foot limitation, we can issue permit stating that we are verifying only zoning regulations and no structural plans are required.
Oh, interesting.
And we have done that for hospitals and some other state or other properties which are under state jurisdiction.
But in order to do this, we have to wait till January 1st?
No.
No?
We are going to... Good afternoon. I'm Mifakashafi, Chief of Engineering Bureau with Building and Safety. Till effective date of the new cycle of the code, we are going to issue information bulletin to implement this requirement. A state regulates that... In fact mandates that any structure greater than 120 square feet, it would require building permit for compliance for the building code. City of L.A. had the same exception in the current code with 64, so we are raising that to meet the new code requirement, which is effective in January, but in the meanwhile, we are going to adopt this requirement by issuing information bulletin and come with a checklist of items. So what we are going to do at the counter, we'll ask for the site plan, show the location of the structure and size of it to make sure it would meet the zoning requirements, you know, as far as setback to the dwelling and the same lot and neighbors. And with that, we issue permit for zoning check only, and our inspector will field-verify the location of the structure. As far as a structural requirement, permit is not required, so that would create flexibility by pre-built a structure within the same size and install it per manufacturer. Of course, you know, homeowners need to pay attention, make sure it is installed per manufacturer installation, like foundation, whatever they do, for the safety aspect of it, especially Chatsworth, that there are a lot of K-zone property. It's designated high-wind area, wind speed of 70 to 100 mile per hour, so we definitely recommend do not deviate from the manufacturer, you know, just as a warning. But facilitate the permit issuance, we can offer that. And in the meanwhile, we would like to offer, like, especially individual engineers to be assigned to that because it's new. In order, you know, we train first-round group of dedicated engineer for that, and then we'll train the rest of the staff just to facilitate it.
Great. Great. Sounds good.
And one help... We'll need help from the planning department. Some hillside properties or almost all hillside properties now, they need sprinklers for every structure. So when we issue permit for... Or at least issue permit for zoning requirements, we'll need sign-off from the planning to waive the sprinklers in hillside properties.
I believe there is already exception for up to a structure less than 200 square feet. If it's a storage or patio cover or gazebo is exempt. If in that you help us by including this type of a structure, then it will help that no referral would be required, so it would eliminate sign-off.
Great. Planning?
Well, I'll begin. Ken Bernstein with Department of City Planning. This is certainly very encouraging, what we've heard from Building and Safety today. We will continue to be involved in these discussions. Any additional steps we need to take with regard to streamlining sign-offs, and as I mentioned last week, the upcoming realignment or consolidation of our departments will allow for very smooth coordination in matters such as this when there are permit requirements that require a zoning response. And in addition, we'll be following up with our work on the rewrite of the zoning code over the next few years, which we also discussed briefly last week, which can address some of the concerns that we've heard on non-conforming rights and other issues. And we're beginning that public outreach process with public meetings just in the next couple of weeks, the week of July 8th. I can turn it over to Anita Serna, who's our lead North Valley Planner for many of our equestrian-related issues.
Great.
Hi, Anita Serna, Planning. As Ken mentioned, there's going to be some listening sessions July 8th, and that's going to be located at the Marvin Brody Building in Van Nuys, and that will give the community, equestrian community, an opportunity to voice any concerns with regards to the existing code and what needs to be changed in order to kind of further preserve equine-keeping areas in the city.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We do have one card. Mary Kaufman?
Is it okay for me to speak from here?
No, we have to get you on record. Yeah.
First of all, Councilman Alarcon, I want to thank you for all of your hard work that you've put in on the equestrian issues. I'm not going to be able to attend the city council meeting tomorrow, but I just want you to know that the equestrians truly appreciate everything that you've done and that you're continuing to do for us. So I just wanted to go on record saying that.
Thank you.
What we've heard from Building and Safety today, while it's very encouraging, the average stall for a horse, even if you do a smaller stall, is 12 by 12, which is 144 square feet, but most pipe corrals are 12 by 24s, which are 288 square feet. It's appreciated that new engineers are going to be assigned to inspecting the pipe corrals and such, but I think rather than trying to reword and get nitpicky on which word replaces here, I think we should really try and go for a complete new set of definitions and codes as it applies to the equestrian enclosure areas. They... There are a lot of community plans that are being redone now, and the building and safety codes aren't keeping up with the community plans. So if we use the community plans as a model, then it will be easier for us to be able to go with the guidelines for building and safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I apologize that I'm not going to be able to do a whole lot on this, but, yeah, the 120 is kind of small. Is it...
It will be like 10 by 12 or whatever square feet they can, you know, size they can come up with, but other solution, they can put two structures side by side with, you know, maybe a few inches of separation. That will allow them bigger structure, because we are... We don't have the authority to override California Building Code requirements. So on our own, we cannot change the code.
All the jurisdictions within the state, they are mandated to adopt the California Code. The local amendments could be more restrictive but not less. So we cannot enlarge it without requiring permit. The other option would be if individual private engineers, they come with that layout, whatever would fit, you know, several design options, we check it once, and we keep copies of those approved plans in our file of all offices. That way, if homeowners chooses any combination of those that are already checked and approved, we call it a standard plan. By using that number and any combination, that engineer of the record, whoever prepared those plan, then we can issue permit again over the counter, because already checked and we have copies of approved plans for our record in our offices. So the way it would work, homeowner would contact the engineer and then buy them or tell them what configuration they want, as long as that engineer has filed a standard plan with the city, the process would be very smooth. This is approach that the pool, swimming pool, you know, engineers, they use, they have different variety of the swimming pool standard plan. So homeowners, they come with a standard plot... Standard plan and plot plan, and we issue those permit at the counter, walk-in basis on the same day.
Okay. But it seems to me that we have to develop those standards for...
That's if it's larger.
Yeah, that are large... For barns that are going to be larger than 120, and most of them are, so, I mean, that's a very small... Small barn. And I... So I still would hope the department would... And the Equestrian Advisory Committee would continue to push to broaden this, because I don't even think an 11 by 11 barn is sufficient for a horse, one horse. So I think... So that's something that needs to be worked on. I hope one of my current colleagues or one of the future council members will take up this issue. So Marissa, I think what we want to do is document that in a letter, and I think we should perhaps ask Mr. Labanze or Englander to carry the ball on that. Okay? So we... That's what we will be doing, and we'll send a letter to the... A copy to the Equestrian Advisory Committee. Really have to carry the ball, and then we'll find a council member to champion it for you. But I do appreciate the, you know, the little barn for goats or whatever, whatever that will accommodate. And then zoning, I think we could probably get... I think the community plans really do have to recognize this industry more prominently and more specifically. I don't think it... I don't think the current community plans adequately recognize the equestrian communities where they may be, particularly in places like Solmar, Chatsworth, Shadow Hills, and other parts of the city as well.
Councilmember, the current community plans... This is Anita Serna with Planning. The current community plans did... Do have current language on equine-keeping, but these new community plans, including Solmar, have complete sections that talk about incorporating new policies to help preserve equine-keeping. It expanded a trail network with horse crossing signals. It also tried to clarify addressing some of the concerns with the definitions on where the distances between the barn and the stall should be, whether it should be the corral or just the actual equine-keeping structure. So I think these new community plans really took into account a lot of the issues the community have been addressing, I mean, posing.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay. Then with that, I want to thank the Equine Advisory Committee again for their leadership in this, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and I hope to work with you in the future as a regular citizen. And please don't hesitate to call on me if you need me to come into City Hall. As I said, I can't lobby, but lobbying requires payment, so if it's a volunteer thing, I can certainly do that. That's not a problem. And then Building and Safety, good luck, and planning with your consolidation, and it's going to be interesting for all of you at the beginning, but I think if it's done properly, I think it will expedite not just these kinds of projects but so many other things. So thank you very much for your assistance so far, and hopefully we can expand the improvements as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, will we be holding the item in committee?
There really isn't anything to send to council, is there?
There... No.
Hmm. No, I think we'll communicate to the council members through a letter.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So we receive and file that, or we're just holding it in committee?
We're just holding committee pending a more fuller report.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Right now, it's kind of in flux.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dale, you had a card on all three items? Yeah.
I just filled out a card to say thank you, first off, from equestrians and their... I hope everybody here realizes how many thousands of them there are, and I know that doesn't really matter to you, but you came and saw the right thing to do and got going, and thank you.
No. I thank you for being there.
Thanks for all for coming and working with us, and I hope we all keep working together. And we have our next equine advisory meeting July 23rd. So I know you talked about some public sessions and stuff that might be a good one to come to.
Well, no, thank you. Thank you. No, it's actually works in reverse. The Equine Advisory Committee was... Helped me put a focus on some of the issues that were affecting the community. I generally knew that there were some points of concern, but I didn't know with that specificity, particularly with things like the barns. That was a total surprise. So, no, thank you for the work you do, especially considering your volunteerism. You know, that's an important piece, and I think it adds an incredible element to L.A.'s culture, and so we want to thank you for that.
Thank you. And your staff. You have a great staff.
Thank you. Okay. Item number three.
Item number three continues from March 7th, 2012, March 21st, 2012, May 30th, 2012, and June 18th, 2013. Barn and Recreation Parks report response to motion, Alarcon Englander, Corian Zine, relative to providing an overview of all city-owned equine areas and the work that has been done to maintain, improve, increase, and promote said areas. Reporting on the progress of the policies adopted in 2001 general plan conservation element and details regard to equine areas in the city. And three, reporting with recommendations on how the city can better promote the city's horse trails and equine areas through online and offline publicity and promotion.
Great. Mr. Regan?
Thank you, Councilman. I'm asking a couple, Dale and Lynn, from the Equine Advisory Committee to come up and speak with me. So I'm going to start off by, well, of course, Kevin Regan, Assistant General Manager with Recreation and Parks, but I also want to follow suit of what a number of the other speakers have said about your dedication and help to the equestrian community. I mean, obviously, that's what we're talking about here today. You've done so many things in your years of public service, but...
I hope we don't do this again tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, we're going to do it. You're not getting out of this kind of stuff for a while.
Yeah, I'd be so sorry to thank you.
Anyway, what I wanted to say was, Councilman, in particular to you and your staff, we had been... Recreation and Parks have been working with the Equine Advisory Committee, you know, at the request of council, doing a lot of different research and making recommendations. But things really started to roll after the meeting that we had at Lake Vitoria, Rex and... I guess it was almost like a year ago now, or, you know, nine or 10 months ago. And I just wanted to thank you for that because the idea of bringing everybody together, the city departments and the community, and then getting everyone on the same page was very helpful. So we've done a number of things in terms of working with different city departments, looking at the various plans, and trying to develop strategies to continue to move forward in publicizing our trail system, our great trail system. You know, just within the Department of Recreation and Parks, we have over 90 miles of riding trails within the city of Los Angeles. Hard to believe in a major metropolitan area we have so many miles of trails, and those are just the Rex and Parks trails. Remember, there's other trails on private property, there's other trails on other city properties. So one of the major goals is to make these connections. And one of the things that you might want to consider leaving as a legacy or trying to suggest to your follow-on council member is that we try to maybe expedite some progress on the Rim of the Valley trail project to make those connections and finally make that long-term dream come true. Rex and Parks is happy to be a part of that. One really exciting thing I wanted you to hear about in terms of publicizing trails and monitoring activities on trails and the maintenance of trails and whether or not there's a bad trail condition or maybe like a tree fell down or there's a pothole people need to know about. At the last Equine Advisory Committee meeting, we had a very great presentation, and the committee is going to be investigating much more on how to possibly bring this new computerized system into the city, which would be one of our recommendations to follow up on. Do you guys want to talk about it? It's called the Park Watch, and it's a really neat computerized system that has cameras positioned in various locations along trails. And then there's like these real-world updates where if somebody's out riding on a trail, it's kind of like a Facebook thing. They can log on, they can make a comment. "I was riding on this particular trail, saw a big pothole," or something like that. So Dale, do you guys want to...
We had a great presentation about Park Watch, and as Kevin said, it's very Facebook-ish in that if you and your family are walking out on the trail and you see something unsafe, you can literally take a picture of it, go back and log it in, and it goes to parkwatch.org with your comments, and it stays as up-to-date as we even use it. And it's pretty exciting. It's right now in Sacramento or Sacramento...
They're using it in a couple of different jurisdictions, but one of the things that we're probably going to be recommending over time is that we try to move towards a system like this. It's a little bit, obviously, funding would have to be identified, et cetera, but I think it's kind of the wave of the future and why I wanted to bring it to your attention, because what we've really focused on in the past is a lot of, well, mapping, et cetera, et cetera, to have handheld maps, but to actually have your trail system monitored by computers and having it set up where folks can actually log in and either check a condition, they might want to... They're going to take a ride, they might want to see, "Hey, is there any problems on this particular trail I'm going to ride on?" And they can log on and see that. So the only other thing I'd like to say is we still are anticipating that hopefully at some point, working jointly with your office, with other... at some point, working jointly with your office, with other city departments, we could...
Better hurry.
Yeah. Well, that we were hoping that maybe, you know, we had done some work towards hoping to get that similar map developed as they did for Griffith Park.
This one?
Yeah, I don't know if we, is that the, yeah, I haven't seen that one yet.
You haven't seen it?
No.
I'll give it to you.
Do we have an announcement?
No.
You want to get it done?
Absolutely.
It's done.
Thank you. You guys are so good. You kept that a secret. Was that a big announcement today?
Yeah.
So anyway, Councilman, that is a great accomplishment, I think, to have this map. And the nice thing about it is that those graphics are so nice.
Yeah, they did a tremendous job on this map, and we want to thank Tom Labange for giving us this idea, and they...
It's nice.
Yeah, this is great.
Well, anyway, Councilman, that, that's pretty much my report, unless there's anything specific else you wanted me to talk about.
No, I think, I think generally speaking, we just want to make sure that we are focused on our horse trails as a recreation activity, and the maintenance of those horse trails is critical. I would hope that, that we can identify more funding, we try to do something with the fees, the licensing fees, but there's just going to have to be a greater commitment. With regard to the navigation system that you talked about in terms of identifying sites with the, with your camera, with your phone, actually, Councilman Garcetti, Mayor-elect Garcetti, has implemented that system in his office with potholes or anything else. So that system is in greater use throughout the United States and is growing almost daily in terms of its applications. I know that Mr. Garcetti, Mayor-elect Garcetti, has stated that one of his primary goals is to create a centralized system where we can, those kinds of constituent services would be centralized, so that it, that you can log on, you don't have to go into Rec and Parks necessarily, you just go to the city of Los Angeles, and you can actually find what you want to report, or the department that you want to report it to. So hopefully, it would be a centralized system, but if the department has the capability to do it now, now, Mr. Garcetti did it with a staff member who developed the system, you know, on his own, so, and they've used that as constituent service program. I know that I worked with, with President Garcetti when I chaired the Information Technology Committee, and that was one of our goals, was to identify that. We've never been able to come up with the funding for that, but hopefully, the new ITA in the new administration will be able to do just that, and I think that would be great for, for not just the equestrian community, but for the entire community, so you can report your potholes, or dams that have been created by beavers on the horse trails, or whatever might be out there. Party, party sites out there that have been destroying the trails. All of those things, but again, we want to thank the equestrian advisory committee for working with Kevin. Kevin, you're in the neighborhood, it's like people know where you live. So you got to do this, but do want to thank Recreation and Parks. There is a lot of work to do, and unfortunately, it does require money and revenue, and it's very difficult, given these things, given the reality of today's economy. But as the economy improves, hopefully, we'll be able to tackle these things and have these efforts lined up. You know, I think we can do a lot more, just like we did here. This map was relatively inexpensive. I think, my office paid for it, right? Yeah, I paid for this. So if we can do this, you know, there's certainly other things we can do to fix the problems. And as you heard from DOT, they made some major improvements to the, to the Seventh Council District in terms of equestrians, and hopefully, we've been able to stimulate some more focus and attention and dedication. I know that when, when city staff is focused and dedicated to something, they can get it done and do it, and do typically a better job. But that's going to have to maintain itself with the push of another council member, and you know, I really have my fingers crossed and hope that, that one of the council members will take on this, this charge and move it forward. Because, you know, the, given our urban nature, this is such a wonderful contribution that, to the city of Los Angeles and its diverse culture, and I'd hate to see it go fall by the wayside, you know? So...
Yeah, I would agree with you.
Yeah. Mary, did you have, did anybody from the equestrian advisory committee, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, thank Kevin for his remarks. Oh, I'm sorry, he knows who I am.
No, no, everybody.
Oh, I'm Lynn Brown, I'm the Vice President of the Equine Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
And I just want to support and agree with the things that Kevin said. I just wanted to say a couple of things about Park Watch, because those were people that I knew that we brought to the meeting last, at the end of early June. Park Watch is inexpensive, I think it's 500 bucks to purchase the software. It's not, it's not going to be a huge deal. The interesting thing about the Park Watch thing is that it can be used by hikers, equestrians, mommy stroller groups, it can be used by everybody, and it can be custom-designed to, when people do report in by email or by, you know, with phone pictures or whatever, that it goes to a central office here, and then it will be, it's, worst of all, the records are kept indefinitely, so that, you know, there is a record now. A lot of agencies just don't have any record-keeping at all, and then, you know, it goes straight to the round file after you filed your complaint. This is a record-keeping system, as well as a reporting system, and it can be localized so that those reports, whether it's illegal dumping, or whether it's trail maintenance, or whether it's illegal riding, or whatever it is, these things can be reported, and then it goes to your local administrators, whichever, whatever local land manager or park group that you want it to go to. It will not go back to Sacramento, it goes locally. As each person, or as each land group organizes it, it goes to the people that they want it to go to. And it's been so far very successfully used by state parks in Central California, and they like it, because it takes a lot of work off of them, in terms of record-keeping and, you know, all of that. So it is being developed as we speak, and they will come back again to the Equine Advisory Committee and make another presentation, hopefully fairly soon. They just had to make sure that they had everything, they were interested in getting people's concerns about what they would like to see. But it is a program that is going forward, and it is not expensive.
Yeah, but I do want to stress that the Mayor-elect is familiar with this application, this program, and not the concept, he's familiar with the application. He knows, he knows how this system works. I believe he wants to do this across the board, not just for equestrian purposes or parks purposes, but for everything. And, and so you want to make sure that you identify somebody in the mayor's office to champion this with you and bring it forward. Yeah, it's a great idea. Great. We have a bunch of the, oh, I'm sorry, Mary Kaufman, did you want to say something?
Mary Kaufman, I also sit on the LA Equine Advisory Committee, and this motion is in support of the equestrian lifestyle, and I just wanted to add the note that these pipe corrals that we have in our backyards to help promote our lifestyles, they are not permanent structures, they're temporary structures, so they can be picked up and moved with us if we move elsewhere within the council district, or to another district, or out of the city, or wherever. So I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if anybody wants more maps of Hanson Dam area, they're right here, and we're happy to get you more if you need them in the next three days.
Where can we get a copy of that nice picture of you on the horse?
Oh, boy. Oh, is that the one, did they, I didn't, did they get that picture in there? That's my favorite picture. And I have to, I have to be honest with you. Oh, that, that is Dale's hat.
Ah, which one?
The one he's wearing, on me. But yeah, that's Dale on the other side of the horse, you can't see him, and Joe Busciano behind him. But yeah, that's one of my favorite pictures.
Be careful going out with Dale, you get, you do trick riding.
I, you know, and the truth is, that day I was suffering from, I could barely walk that day. I forget, one of those old people injuries that you get, the older you get, and, and yet, when Joe Busciano jumped on the horse, I said I wasn't, wasn't to be outdone, and I somehow got on the horse. Dale lent me his hat, and somebody took that beautiful picture. Yeah.
Elias Washington in front of you there.
Is that Elias Washington? Yeah, he's the cutest little kid. So, so yeah, if anybody wants more maps, they're right here, and we'll be certain to get you a bunch. Okay?
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you all.
Will we be holding this in committee also?
Yes, we'll hold it in committee.
Very good.
I believe we have no other items. Before us, there's no public comment card, so with that, I want to thank again the equestrian advisory committee for all the work that you do. Please, I hope that you've been encouraged to continue the fight, and you didn't need me to do that, but, but now you know that you can actually accomplish things, and let's continue to work together. And let me know if you need my advice to how to usher things forward, but thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Can I say thank you to the staff, the city attorney, the city clerk, and the, and the CLA's office for, for the work that they do? This is my last committee here, actually, I think it's my last committee hearing ever, huh? Great. But we couldn't, we couldn't do what we do without the staff, as much as we could jolt them and make them do more work, they, they make us look better for all the mistakes that we would make without them. So we want to thank them, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure. And we'll say it again tomorrow, but might as well say it now. Thank you again. This meeting is now adjourned.